United States of America and the civil public for which stands one nation under God. It is this hope, liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to accept the public's side? Now, Stewart, hello, Mr. Stewart. Okay, I need a motion to accept the agenda as modified. And these two resolutions were in, Meg? Four and five or just?
I just put down one because it's two parts of one, that's just one bond resolution.
Oh, the bond resolution, so it's two part. Oh, one's a negative violation, right?
So it's four.
Yeah, so before, yes, yes, yes. First, we have the minutes of the January 24, 2011 meeting. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
No.
Second? Any discussion on the minutes? No, okay, fine. Court martial, all in favor, Senator Parker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, communications?
Do you think the vote on the agenda?
Aye.
All right, we need a, I think we need a motion to accept the?
No move.
Second? Okay, all in favor of accepting the modification of the agenda as presented? Senator Parker saying aye?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, there we go. All right, we straight, Meg?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for keeping us straight. Communications, we've got alcohol beverage licensed fuel for New Street Tavern. Okay, we don't have any input on that anyway or other. We got alcohol beverage licensed fuel for high withers wine and spirits, same thing. Chief says I have no problem with this.
Anything to do with that?
Yeah. Great American Road Races, Kyle snuck past me in 20 minutes. Dear Village of Goshen Board of Trustees, on behalf of the Goshen Rotary, as Race Director for the Great American Weekend Races, please accept this letter as our formal request to the Village to hold the annual road races on July 2, 2011. Race registration begins at 6:00 a.m., the races begin at 8:00. Race should be concluded by 11:00. Race should begin in Grease Street and finish in Frontal Service Court following the same route as passed several years. Insurance for the Village will be secured and certificate name of the Village we provide. Thank you for your anticipated consent. Very true of yours, Robert J. Dickover, Race Director.
Dickover, Darnley and Donovan?
Yeah, I think that's from that famous law firm.
I forgot the answer. Who's the law firm?
I will, the chief says he will coordinate with the race group, traffic control, and I accept he's got no problem. So we need a motion to accept this, Meg? All right, I need a motion to accept the, give the permission to run the road race?
Some.
Second? Any discussion? Do you need a discussion, Court martial, all in favor, Senator Parker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, on behalf of the minute, this is for the St. Patrick's Day Parade sign request. On behalf of the minute, I'd say St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee and the entire Irish community, I want to thank you, Chief Wyatt, Mike Nuzzellis, the Village Board, and your staff for helping make our parade the outstanding event it has become. We look forward to another outstanding day on March 13, 2011. I would like to request to be able to put up a sign in the Village Square up to two weeks prior today, parade as we have done prior year in response to forward moving the same. We look forward to a favorable response, I remain. Very true of yours, Pat Leif, Chairman, line of march. Okay, we need a motion on this?
No move.
Second?
Anybody?
Any discussion?
Discussion, I have discussion.
Certainly.
I have to say, I'm just going to keep repeating it, I love, it's not just for the Irish, it's for everybody who's Irish on the way, and for that parade. However, I want to, for the public and for Mr. Diana, say once again, for the fifth time, I think, that this is a countywide parade and there is no reason on earth for the Village of Goshen residents to be sheltering the entire burden here. The county should be kicking in, providing us the funds for the overtime for a DPW on our way.
Okay, just an honorable receipt, or Jim Wyatt received a correspondence that was kind of the opposite to the?
They helped, good thinking, John.
The sheriff could not provide any help as he has in the past with the police work, but that was from a sergeant in the sheriff's office and when we contacted the sheriff called voice, he said, "No, no, we can see that we know they were." So I don't know, maybe they heard our meeting and decided they'd say less and then give us more, I don't know. I mean, give us the same.
So they are, or at least providing what?
Well, they normally did, you know, if it got to that, yeah, so that was.
But I'm looking for more.
Wait a minute, we're asking, we didn't even get to ask for more and they're giving us less. But anyway, yeah, no, I agree with you, but so far it's been unsuccessful.
So you need a motion to allow a sign? I think there's a?
They've remained?
We made the motion, we got a vote on it. Yeah, okay, all in favor of the committee, the St. Patrick's Day Committee to let us put up a sign?
Aye.
Same time.
Yeah, same time as normal, okay. The abstract, this bill's examined by the Board and approved in accordance with the abstract, 2010/2011, number 21, checks numbering 1033 through 1098, and the amount of $78,500 and $10.24. Any motion on that?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, any discussion? All in favor, Senator Parker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, this is a motion from Cornerstone for water testing on the stockpile. The Board hereby accepts a proposal from the Cornerstone Environmental Group dated the 26th January for additional sampling and analytic testing of the stockpile material located in the Village property adjacent to Route 17M. The Mayor is hereby authorized to sign the proposal as estimated lab and shipping fees of $14,000. This is the initial testament required by, is it required by DEC or by the landfill where the drop?
The landfill where the, take it.
They're taking it, okay. Okay, so I'll need a motion on this and second?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Not choice.
Oh, yeah. No choice, I have to discuss it.
No.
Okay, all right, all in favor, Senator Parker saying aye?
Aye.
Cynthia Salinino and Mike Nuzzellis are hereby authorized to attend the Hutchins Valley Water Works Conference on February 24, 2011, at the IBW Hall in Harmony, New York. Is that the total cost of training, $70, and that 4.5 water operator contacts hours will be awarded each participant? Need a motion on this?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Only that they have to maintain a certain number of hours, and we're lucky they're close.
Yeah, that's nice for them, it's lucky for them too, they can come back. All right, Court martial, all in favor, Senator Parker saying aye?
Aye.
Is this the?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yes, I have, I'm sorry. Okay, we got a resolution. Whereas the Village of Goshen, this is a resolution, to schedule a public hearing on the sewer assessment. Whereas the Village of Goshen will be compelled to raise their existing capital assessment on sewer charges for the purpose of paying the debt incurred in connection with the construction of the new wastewater treatment plant facility, as well as the debt incurred relative to disposition of material excavated from the abandoned Village landfill to accommodate the construction of said treatment facility. And whereas the proposed increase in the current special assessment require a public hearing prior to its implementation. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village Board for the Village of Goshen hereby schedules a public hearing on Monday, March 14, at 7:30 p.m., as soon as thereafter as matter may be heard. At the Village Hall for the purpose of considering an increase in the special assessment to 150 per unit per quarter for the purpose of paying the debt incurred relative to construction of wastewater treatment facility and the debt incurred in connection with disposition of the material excavated from the abandoned Village landfill to accommodate the construction of said treatment facility. Need somebody to make that motion?
I'll make it for discussion.
Second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, no further discussion? No, discussion, that's why you said it, I was being a student, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have some stuff, I'm not sure if anyone else. I'm a, you know, I voiced this to you previously, that I'm a little concerned that March 14 doesn't leave enough of a window to gather the appropriate information, because I know there's going to be a lot of questions from the public on this issue, and I want to make sure we have the information and the answers. I know that some of the questions that I posed when Mr. Benary was here still haven't been answered, and we still haven't seen an analysis of bills about doing it based on usage, which I think we understand wouldn't be the best way to go, but I think it's important for us to have compelling evidence to show the public, so we can explain why and have some figures to be made available. Because, you know, doing it by usage sounds like it makes sense, when we look at the numbers, it probably isn't the best way, but I think we need to give a better explanation to the public than just that alone. Maybe analyze some bills, show what the average bill would be if we were to do the increase based on usage, and maybe that would show that the bill would be even higher than the assessment increase. You know, the more information the out is power. Also, I still haven't been told if there's some kind of exemption or reduction we can give those residents on fixed income, essentially under the STAR program, people on social security disability on that fixed income, I'm not sure if there's a mechanism, unless we necessarily even want to use it, but I don't know if that exists, and I'd like to have that answer for the public if they were to ask it. The first time this was done, X number of years ago, it was at the Senior Center, you know, the Village hired consultants looking into this information, and I don't feel that we have the necessary base of knowledge, coupled with the fact that we don't have another work session this month because of President's Day, I just don't know if the Board has enough time. I'm not opposed to setting a date for a public hearing, and I think that we should, but one month, we're only going to have one work session between now and that meeting, I'd be very concerned that we don't have the necessary information. If that information was presented before then, then I would do a favor, I just don't know if we're going to have it this year. I'm not sure if anyone else has anything?
Where did we call it, 150?
Treasure.
I'd like to talk more with Mike Benary about that, because we also talked about if we had to raise the assessment, he may also be able to recalculate the rates, the load of the usage rates, which wouldn't offset a dollar for dollar, he's been clear about that, but would offset some of it. So, I do, I'm more, just more concerned at the moment about the date, in terms of it's, we need to do this with a little more information, and I'm not sure Mike Benary's going to get together for us, and not knocking Mike, it's a lot of information to get together between now and March 14. Because I don't know even if 150 is the right number, I'm hoping it's less, but it could unfortunately be more too, and we need to know that.
You need them? My concern is that we don't have an answer to what Mr. Benary was suggesting could be addressed by funds from the general fund versus funds that have to be gotten slowly before. And that, he says, that's the answer, sorry to put you on the topic, by our council. The difficulty I know is that we have to provide funding within a certain timeframe, and therein lay the difficulty. What timeframe is that?
Well, there's two aspects that we're talking about. We're talking about the shortfall that we have to pay our existing rates, which has required us to borrow money from the general fund to pay that debt, and also the money that needs to be raised to pay back, the money that we're going to be forced to borrow to dispose of the stockpile. So there are two components there. I would think that relative to the general fund, I mean, it's not unheard of for money to be borrowed from the general fund, make up a shortfall on the water sewer fund. That money has to be paid back, as the general rule is, I understand, within the same fiscal year. Not unheard of, although perhaps not best practice, for that money to be paid back at the conclusion of fiscal year, and then, in effect, re-loamed at the beginning of the next fiscal year. That's the equivalent of kicking the can down the road, and I can't recommend, obviously, that you continue to kick the can down the road. So, also, the law does authorize paying back capital debt through a combination of usage fees and capital assessment, which is what we do now. I know that Mr. Benary thinks it's cleaner to pay back the capital debt 100% out of the special assessment, which would be perhaps the corresponding reduction in the water usage rates while an increase in the capital assessment. I can tell you that either way is legal. I don't know what the reduction, frankly, if any, would be in the usage rates.
It's?
Did I answer the question, or did I kind of give the lawyer's answer?
You gave the lawyer's answer, but that's what I wanted on the record, so that helps. The other question I have is the drop dead debt for paying back to man who's the company that's doing the work and doing the hauling. That's the only place I don't want to run into a problem, because they have been doing good work and it's been a difficult situation, and they did it knowing full well that they were starting without being paid.
Correct, and our contract, I believe, calls for a 90-day window, because they knew we wouldn't have our part.
Which leads up to what date? That's my question.
A month from now.
A month from now.
Well, that person, Heather, we had it, we got him paid.
I understand.
Let me also respond to that by saying that, you know, the next resolution is to authorize that borrowing, this resolution is the way you're going to pay it back.
I understand.
What you're probably going to do is you're going to authorize what I call a blanket borrowing, for a larger amount hopefully that we're going to need, and then the treasurer will take out bond anticipation notes against that larger amount, so the money will be available in increments, and then, you know, you say you need it, you do have some time to figure out, you know, if you're going to use the assessment, how much the assessment you need to utilize.
Well, then you just give me the answer once, because in truth, though I'd love to have, as quickly as possible, there are critical questions that are not yet answered. Therefore, I'm anxious for it, Mr. Roddy and Mr. Char saying, in wanting some more finite answers, and these are, but we really have to, on the record, say we need to get these answers, we can't go another month without getting these answers, we need the answers to the questions we've raised at our last meeting, and?
I think it would become somewhat, I'm sorry, would become somewhat problematic, is Mr. Benary has given us an idea of what it would take to bridge the gap on the permit, shortfall. Now, I guess the issue is, did you want to do that and then have a public hearing now, and then with some unknowns, in terms of the, what I'll call the stockpile and the nesty bills, have another public hearing at a subsequent time, or do you want to do it all at once? That's not, either way is legal.
I view the two things not being the same thing being dramatically intertwined, and one relates to the other, and they both relate to?
I can tell you when there's a bunch of people sitting in these chairs, they're going to do the same thing.
Right.
Because their whole money comes out of their pocket.
Yes. I think, you know, they, in reality, the average person gets their sewer bill or water bill, it doesn't matter what the nuances and where this money is going and that and that, if you care about the bottom line. I think it's, you know, connected, the two are connected, so I would be in favor of one, public hearing all at once, because the two things aren't going to be implemented nicely.
Any more discussion?
I just don't want to leave out this both. If having it on the 14th is going to keep us safer, then I can consider it, but I don't have the answers to the question that I didn't have the answers to last?
Well, in terms of how much, I mean, we're going to talk about the borrowing next, and how much we're going to have to pay to dispose of the stockpile, we can give an estimate as to what that number is, you know, we have it within certain parameters. You know, are there funds available for DEC? Were filed for a program, we don't know if we're going to get that money or not get that money. I think that Benary's numbers were a little more definite in terms of the current, what I call the shortfall. Could you, listen, this is more of an art than a science, unfortunately, so could you have a public hearing and say this is about the number it's going to take if you do that? Might that number change in the future, it might?
Okay.
If it changes, it's going to necessitate a another public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Do you need a roll call vote?
Trustee Char?
Just because I think it's premature and we don't have all the information, it's not that, I know we have to do this, and we have to do this in short, mostly in short order, because I assume, rather than later, but I have to vote no if you go for the date.
Trustee Matthew?
I have to, very touchy, Charlie.
Trustee Roddy?
I agree as well.
Okay. Next is the resolution on the bond. Whereas the Village of Goshen is here to fore undertake a project involving the closure and reclamation of the abandoned Village landfill and creation of a temporary stockpile consisting of sawed-on waste material excavated from said landfill, and whereas the Village is now authorized to undertake new work associated with disposition of stockpile material, and whereas the work is previously viewed pursuant to the regulations of the Environment for Conservation Law sent forth in six, New York, CRR Part 617, whereas as a result, said review of a negative declaration was duly issued pursuant to six NR CRR 617.7 by the Village Board as lead agency on March 20, 2006, thereby concluding the environmental review required for the creation and disposition of the stockpile material, and whereas the Village was not authorized to borrow any money to pay the costs associated with disposition of stockpile materials, and whereas there are no other agencies involved in this borrowing coordinated review is not required, and the Village Board should act as lead agency in connection with this. And whereas the Village Board determines that the necessity of borrowing connected to disposition of stockpile material will have no significant adverse environmental impact, now therefore, hereby we resolve the Village Board, the Village of Goshen, issues a negative declaration in connection with the adoption of the borrowing. Need a motion on this?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, hearing done, Meg, we need a roll call vote?
Trustee Char?
Aye.
Trustee Matthew?
Aye.
Trustee Matthew?
Aye. That all we have to do on this?
No, we have to now adopt the, what you should have from Mr. Smith, which would be adopt the borrowing resolution authorizing, I'll summarize for this, a bond resolution for Village of Goshen, adopted this evening, February 14, 2011, authorizing the abandonment of a refuse disposal area consisting of the removal and disposal of stockpile material, stating that the estimated maximum cost thereof is $7 million, appropriating said amount for such purpose and authorizing the issuance of $7 million serial bonds of said village to finance said appropriation. And I hasten to add, when I spoke before, that's the maximum amount to be borrowed, $7 million. You also retain the authority, should you wish, although I don't know that you would, to do this through a series of BANs over seven-year periods, or you can authorize this borrowing over a period of 20 years. If you only take out BAN totaling $5.3 billion, you don't have to borrow the extra $1.7 billion or pay back the extra $1.7. The idea is to try to minimize the number of times that we have to do the borrowing resolution to establish an amount that is sufficient to cover our costs.
So if you don't use it all, you don't have to take it all.
That's correct.
Or pay it.
Or pay back.
Okay, I need a motion to take this bond resolution?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, give me your roll call vote?
Trustee Char?
Aye.
Trustee Matthew?
Aye.
Trustee Roddy?
Aye.
I have a vote too.
Mary.
Yes, aye. Does it mean two thirds of the people on the board? Okay. So, trustee, come. Monsieur?
First, I'd like to report from now, he asked me to please remind everyone that with the snow being so hard, even though it was nice and warm today and things were starting to melt, if you have a fire plug in front of your house and near your house, please help. The DPW has been exceedingly busy with the winter wear, and please try and dig it out so that we have a safe house. As well, as a result of the frost and the freezing and the shifting, we've had several water main breaks. Over the last six days, I think we did one, two different, six different water main breaks, and it comes when the ground is freezing and thawing and shifting, and the guys have been known to stop smelling, they've still been up at night and at the wee hours of the morning trying to get this fixed. Advice to public, due to the many water main breaks, sometimes there is, because of the cold temperature in the break, slight discoloration in your water, run it for a minute and it'll clear off, it just means that because of a break that had to be fixed that it's been fixed. However, this is temporary and it should clear itself very quickly. I think that's it.
Thank you. Ed?
Just?
May I, one thing before you go on? Art, myself and Jim are meeting with the county on a regular basis, this will be our second one of late, in order to try to move forward and come to a coordination of the sewer, um, sewer, the water lines going out to the CRP well. We'll report after our next meeting with you.
What's the reservoir level?
The reservoir level is, hang on, the reservoir level is?
What if it's empty?
Come on, Michael.
Next page?
Next page?
Well, just because it's good?
If you don't, just tell me.
Can't.
Okay, but it's how we come up four for last week.
We're in great shape for this kind of year. Okay, Ed?
Just as a reminder, you might have some more snow this year yet, but you are responsible to clear the sidewalk in front of your house, business, property, whatever the case is, just remind people to do that. And then just on a personal note to our colleague, and more importantly, our friend now, my greatest deep sympathies for myself and my wife and my children on the loss of his mother last week.
Hey, Kyle? Kyle?
There's no sewer report for this week, but I would just like to continue the conversation.
Okay, there's no sewer report for this week, but I would just like to continue the conversation about the public hearing because as Marcia said, I don't want us to, you know, just sit on it. So maybe we can come to at least decide what our next move will be. You know, I think we've agreed that we need more information. Maybe each trustee can map out questions and concerns that we have. I have some things I mentioned tonight, I'm sure I'll think of more. Maybe we can put together a document to give to Mr. Benary by the end of the week, give him a week or two to look over that and then at our next work session, we can discuss that. And maybe at that time, we have more information at that work session, hopefully we will, we might not. But if we do, then the following public meeting, we can pass a resolution on a public hearing. Just my thoughts, you know, if we have ideas, let's get them to Mr. Benary, let him start working on them. Hopefully at that, at that time, we'll have more clarity on these issues, at least so we are moving forward and, you know, taking the next step.
I have no problem with that. I think we've been pretty, I. Oh, you know, Mal and I, we're really clear, we're concerned about the one major issue of whether you can, the reimbursement to the general fund and that comes down to a legal question that Mr. Benary has insisted on several occasions. So I think we have to pursue that beyond Mr. Benary and try to get an answer to that as well and get someone to put something in mind.
Right. At least, you know, get some facts down or certain questions go to Mr. Benary, certain questions go to Mr. Donovan or Mr. Kelly or any of that. Just at least that way we're, you know, we continue to move with all the other deals. I'm not sure if we're in favor of that or not.
I'll get my ideas together. Just make what concerns what you have.
May I, when is our next, um, non-public meeting?
Next week.
All our meetings are public.
Oh, no, no.
Work session.
I didn't even see all this, I didn't even see all this move.
You like that? What? Or the business meeting?
If I liked it, I wouldn't have, I couldn't have given a snide comment. Business meeting.
Your first one in March, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's that?
On the seventh, that's too soon because you said you wanted to ask him a couple of weeks. What's the one after that?
I think that'll probably be sufficient.
Yeah, but you said get the comments together by the end of this week and then give them to him. I don't think he can get his answer by.
Seven is three weeks or not, just saying.
I think it's two weeks.
I guess in two weeks.
Two weeks to do it? Okay.
We can at least ask and if he can't for some reason, you know.
Yeah.
At least this way we have, we have a clear.
All right, well, look the schedule. And I would look the schedule on the seventh.
If the boards agree, I don't want to make that decision.
It's top on our agenda, so whenever we can get our answers as quickly as possible, we can move as quickly as possible.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll contact him and see if we can book him for the seventh and then everybody get their questions. Take another shot. I'm sorry. Anything else? Nothing on recreation?
Uh, nothing, it's been quiet, just gearing up in the summertime.
Okay. I'm sure during our whole board, hearing our condolences to Mal Stewart and the loss of his mother. She was a wonderful woman. She was missed. We had the Cub Scouts in here last week and we have some Eagle Scouts. When is that, Eagle Scout, what was that, about eight of them?
Yes.
Eight of them and what is that?
Troop 63.
Oh.
What is it?
April, so, you know, it's, we're meeting with the Cub Scouts and some of them someday, hopefully will be Eagle Scouts. They were very impressive, there was eight Eagle Scouts.
That's a lot.
The Cub Scouts that I met were, what is it, were they going into become Boy Scouts Webblers?
Yeah.
Webblers too.
Yeah, Webblers. They were in the Webblers and they were ready to be Boy Scouts and they were.
You were one.
Very impressive.
No, no, I wasn't. I thought it was that one.
So that was very nice, that was one of the nice things. And two of our board members now in Kyle were Eagle Scouts. Okay, that's all I have.
No, we're not.
Was it ground out?
I was a Brown.
I'm a Boy Scout, but I, I don't think I got much past. Citizen comment. Yes, sir.
Let's see, firstly, any luck on finding out if the village is a signing member of the National Anti-Terrorist Network?
Talked to the chief, though he's not familiar with that terminology. Perhaps you can find out if there's some other name they go by, so.
Okay, that's my understanding that that's how it's identified.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, secondly, it's been my observation that the stretch of road in front of the well from the Civil War Monument, Lemongellos and the public library there, it's pretty dark. And I find that, at least I have trouble sometimes seeing pedestrians that are getting in and out of their cars and there seems to be a lot of pedestrian traffic right there. And there's a bit of a blind turn there coming up the hill. And the thought occurred to me that, you know, I would hate to see anybody get injured there, might be a good idea to add some lighting there or at least maybe just observe for yourselves, you know, what your feel is when you're going through there. But that, since Lemongellos has opened up, that's become a much busier intersection. And also since they changed the route of traffic around the statue, I think just the whole dynamic there is different and I also noticed people seem to have a little difficulty adjusting to that new flow of traffic. Uh, yeah, I'd hate to see anybody get hit by a car there.
State, no, no, I just wanted to clarify something.
Okay.
Is that a state road to me?
That is a state.
That's a state road, yeah.
So every time we've tried to suggest something to the state, crosswalks or things like that, you know.
Yeah, I know you're still waiting for a crosswalk over in front of, not just Bagels, right? That's been about a year and it's taking.
So, you know, state roads, we have very good control. Because our road, you know, yeah, we do it, makes sense.
Well, maybe right there on the corner of, I forget the name of the street that goes between Lemongellos and the library, but maybe one right there on the corner because that's Village Street, right?
Doing what there?
Well, just putting the light so that, again, I just fear that a pedestrian is going to get hit there. I always find that when I'm driving up, up the hill anyway and coming around that little bit of a bend, you know, I go slow, but oftentimes I don't see people to the last minute. They're coming out from between cars and you don't see them, especially with the SUVs are so tall, they just come right out. Anyway, I'm just worried about somebody getting hit there, so I thought I'd bring it up.
We're trying to look into it. I don't know whether that's, that's an orange at Rockland area, concerned we can, we can contact them, whether they put a light, you know, put another street light in that area, but I'm not sure. I'm trying to find out.
Okay. Just take a look for yourself, see what you think. Maybe I'm overreacting.
Yeah, I don't know.
Along the lines of security again, you know, I noticed a metal detector here, that's the appropriate terminology.
Magnetometer.
Magnetometer. But the thought occurs to me, I mean, if you're, if you're really concerned about security, there are other vulnerabilities to this hall and the one thing that, that really stands out in my mind are the windows. I mean, really, if somebody were so inclined, and I hate to think that anybody would be, we're all, you know, I mean, you could see from across the street or you don't have to be in the room or even near the building. Well, I just, I'm scared.
Guys want to shoot us and I.
I don't want to see, I'm nonviolent, I've never.
Outside, that what you're saying?
I never fired a gun in my life.
Yeah.
When I was a kid, I had one of those cork guns, you know, but I've never, never fired a gun in my life, so I certainly have no, you know, I'm nonviolent, but the thought occurs to me because, you know.
Yeah, we're trying to.
I think that's true of anybody.
Yeah, exactly.
Not this building.
This window, right. Well, I know the town hall.
We can, we can protect every, as much as protecting people as to this.
Oh, I know, I understand, I understand. Yep, I completely understand. It's just the thought occurs to me.
Historical building, you know.
In the interest of continuity.
I think the purpose is that if people coming in for court don't have weapons on.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to.
Friends are worrying about having windows in buildings.
Yeah. Well, you may want to consider just some shades.
Don't do anything on.
Next item. Oh, well, is it true that a representative of this board went into the Indy and raised the devil with my editor over my coverage of the January 24th village board meeting, which resulted in my termination as a writer to cover these meetings?
You got fired?
I got fired.
Anybody, any member of the board speak to the editor to get David fired? Well, Mr. Hickon fired. I have a bunch of calls into the editor, I have never spoken to him.
Okay. I was told by the personnel at the paper that the mayor actually came up into the office and raised the devil with the editor. So if that's, if that's true or not true, I just wanted to confirm it in my own mind.
I did not go.
Okay.
I haven't been in the office since last election, mine.
Okay. Well, if I.
I spoke to him once at the, at the Joyce's going away party, the only time I've spoken to him.
Okay.
And I was just about that and then, well, I, we've been calling back and forth, phone calls, but we haven't done, I did not go up there myself.
Well, that's why, it pays that, it pays to go to the source.
That's not saying, don't you say my favorite reporter is high, is high in priority. Withdraw my favorite reporter, you get the grant relief and any other news.
I appreciate that, thank you. Well, I regret that I'm no longer employed with them and I hope, I hope they get somebody better than me.
I do too.
And, but I'm still covering, actually, I guess we're the only media here tonight, but my invitation to you stands that if you still want to feed me copies of resolutions, police reports, et cetera, anything at all that you want on the videos, it would be my privilege to post them. So I'm available in that regard. I know my status has changed a bit, so I wasn't sure if you still wanted to feed me documents or not. But anyway, it's been a privilege to serve you, but I'll still be coming.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I think that's it. I don't know, I could always come back, right?
Sure.
If I remember something. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Ready? I've got a list. Just to follow on with what Marcia mentioned and Ed referred to with clearing snow, I don't know if people are legally required to clean the hydrants in front of their house, but people should really be encouraged to clean, clear out the hydrants when it snows and not to let it freeze and come back. I take my snow blower and clean out the one in front of my neighbor's house every time. Make sure that six people in bunker gear can get in there so there's plenty of clearance. It's important and people don't think about it and the way the flowers go through, it just gets, so you can't get to it. It's very important and people should keep it in mind, even if it's not in front of your house, make sure that the hydrant on your street is cleaned out.
Thank you, it's very important.
It's very important. And when a house burns down, people will remember how important it is. The, to reiterate what Marcia and Ed again mentioned about the, and Kyle, about getting confirmation in writing with regard to the proper accounting of the borrowing, not to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to point out that that's exactly what I've suggested that the board do, not for this board, but for future boards, that you get a written opinion from the state comptroller's office to protect future boards and to protect the village going down the line. And not only rely upon our own council, but to get an opinion from the state which would absolve the village of any liability because we would be following the state's directives.
Let's not go into it. Hold on a second, please. One point at a time because last, last time when you went to six points, I lost, I lost my train of thought where I want to answer each question at a time. It's not the state comptroller's job to do that. You mentioned that before, that's not, that's not their job, that's not their charter to do that. So there'd be no reason to go to them in that regard. And it would never resolve you from any litigation because our attorney can tell you, that never resolves you, no matter what you do, it's who you are no matter what. So that, that is a misconception, that would resolve us from anything and it's not their, it is not the state comptroller's job. They're done is to come in and order the after the fact. Next comment.
On the landfill removal, do we have an estimate of how much of the material's been removed at this point in percentage wise, truckloads, cubic yards, weight, et cetera? And did, and did Mr. Tully misspeak last time when he suggested that the truckloads were 20 ton? Are they 20 cubic yards? 20 tons seems very heavy for a truckload.
The yardage of the trucks, or the volume of the trucks is in yards, but the weight of the truck is what's measured at the destination that they're arriving at. So it's, there are two things there, the 20 ton trucks, the, 20 yard trucks are other that are weighed when they get to the landfill.
That's what I thought because you indicated they were 20 tons.
You're right.
I mean, that seems beyond the limits for that. Do we have?
Hold on, we didn't answer your question. We got 41, what are we getting out there, 41 out of 77?
Approximately about 55% complete.
55%. Yes, they are, they are doing it one. Moving along.
Will it, just, I didn't have this on the list, but after this round of testing, is there further testing that they will be requiring? As I remember, the contract had it at 50%. They would, that middle sets required additional testing. Have we, any indication that they're going to require additional testing?
The testing is a bit of a moving target with, with testing as required by the receiving landfill. So this next round of testing is in advance of the completion of the landfill. We think this should cover it all, but we're never really certain until we see what the results of the tests are. But, but right now, as far as we know, this should complete the testing based on the information we have today.
Is there anything that can be reported to the community about the compliance conferencing consent order?
The only thing I can say is I did speak to the attorney general's representative, probably on the order of two weeks ago. And we would like to get, he would like to and I would like to get this wrapped up by the end of the month. Whether that'll happen, you know, but that, that's the target that he asked me to go by. There's certain things that are beyond his control, my control, that's certain input that is required from the DEC that we await. And there's a final report issued by Mike and Tully regarding the sewer surcharges that he needs comments on from the DEC.
So there's two issues there.
The two issues, that's great.
I would take the bet that no, it won't be the end of the month.
Bob, I would like it to be.
I would like it, but I'm not worried.
The question anymore.
That will be my age by the time this thing's finished.
Is it fair to say that this is a matter of negotiation?
I've never characterized it that way, you know.
I have a good answer.
I don't understand the process, which is why I'm asking.
I have a different answer, everything's negotiation.
Along those lines, is there anything that you can speak to with regard to the arbitration process?
As a long time negotiator, you never speak about your strategy in negotiations until the negotiations are finished.
That was what I was asking.
We met with the arbitrator, we have another meeting scheduled for this Friday, at which time we hope to, I certainly hope to establish things to begin test building.
To be.
To begin test building.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, that was, that was, I thought you were still talking about the attorney general.
No, the arbitration with the town.
I'm sorry, I didn't speak.
Is, so this is basically, you're still talking about the process?
What we, what we did is we basically, we had a, a, a meeting with the arbitrator, everyone knows is John Cameron, he's an attorney, he was Judge Colbod's clerk. The town attorney and I had a meeting with him. We had another, just basically to bring him up to speed. He had the pleadings in the case to let him know each side's position. We then, it took a couple of hours, we were going to meet again for the purpose of establishing a schedule to start beginning test building. Mr. Klicky was ill, that meeting was canceled. We were, then the arbitrator is actually not available Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of this week and we have a meeting scheduled for Friday of this week, at which time my this week, um, at which time, uh, my anticipations and scheduled dates for the end of testimony.
All right.
Um, on CRV, on, on CRV, uh, we haven't heard about the permit, so I'm assuming that hasn't happened yet, but, uh, we, there has also been a long discussion about the design of the ultimate, uh, system. Can you give us some indication of where we are in that process?
You want to answer that?
I'm not sure when you say.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, when, when Mr..
The ultimate system is one thing, if you, are you asking me about meeting with the county now about the?
No, um, when Mr. O'Leary was here, uh, he has thrown out several concepts of how the CRV would be tied in with the village water system, whether it would be treated if the well hadn't brought down, or whether it would be brought down and treated, whether it would run up to the reservoir, et cetera, and those were system design questions that were unresolved. Are there any further?
I don't want to over speak, I don't want to over speak, but I think that you're talking about long range plans, Joel, is that what you're asking, whether they've gone any further on the long range over the next 20-year plan?
Uh, I, perhaps I was mistaken, but my impression was that Jim was talking about what would be done in, you know, once you get the permit, how this is going to be tied in to the village water system.
That's already been approved by the county.
The permit?
The, the plans, the plan to the tie-in has already been approved.
But.
What you were talking about is a long range.
A long range plan.
And it's just concepts that are being talked about, or have been.
So, so when Jim O'Leary was here addressing the board in work session, the, he was just spitballing ideas for, for a long range?
I don't want to get into a thing with you, but.
I'm not making, I'm asking.
You're talking about, when you're talking about making long range plans for the future, I wouldn't call it spitballing, I would say you're considering concepts for long range plans for the future, I wouldn't.
So, it's nothing that will have any bearing within the next several years about the use of the CRV?
What a way of posing the question that makes it impossible to answer, Joel.
I'm just, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to, to understand what is going on here with our government.
What is going to be?
The.
I take homage to that thing, but beyond that, what is, the tie-in has already been approved. That's as far as I can come. I, I'm not clear on what it is.
Is, is the board moving forward with regard to the, the ultimate design of the use of that well, uh, as integrated into the Goshen Water System?
You're, you're making an assumption that there's some ultimate design, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure where you, where you get into that.
Okay.
How do you get into that? There isn't any.
Then we'll move on. Um, I just want to mention again, as I had mentioned before about the library, we all saw the article in the paper, um, I have made the same point at the town that I made here, which was then confirmed with this article in the paper, uh, the library board had a meeting last Monday, as this board was meeting in work session, that meeting went on for almost three hours, I, uh, am sorry to say that I actually watched it online.
Really?
Probably one of the few people that did, uh, and let me tell you that my personal assessment of that situation is that that board is completely out of touch. They are serious about going forward with looking at the Healy property, they, there are certainly members of that board that understand that, uh, it would mean taking that property, removing the, the potential development, rate, rateability of that property off of the rolls, and yet they are still going forward looking at it. And again, I urge you, each and every one individually, to reach out and, and create some pressure, because what they're, they're producing. And what they're about to do will have financial impact on the entire community, every tax entity, the schools, the town, the village, and the fire district.
Much as it pains me to agree with you, you're right, and I think it ain't happening. There's no way.
One would certainly hope.
No, it ain't happening.
It would have to go to a vote.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, they voted $11,000 to continue to have an architect look at it.
I understand, what, what they have control of, they're going to, but what they have to go to the public is.
Nonetheless, that, that, coming out of your pocket, Mr. Mayor, and mine, it's additional tax dollars, and they, as I say, they seem to be out of touch.
Yeah, I don't, you know, that, that article was just, uh.
And the last point I had on my wrist.
Could you, could you, could you let me finish this?
I'm sorry.
And you read that article, and again, that's why Neil was my favorite reporter, because that was just full of, full of errors and mistakes, it was, you know, the, the record, not just in Goshen, but all over the state, becoming a laughing stock, they can't, they can't get anything right, and then just, just some of that story there was just, just so ludicrous, it doesn't even bear, bear comment, but, uh, that is never happening, and we don't know that. Okay, Joel, I'm sorry.
The, uh, last item I had was, um, a reminder that I've urged the board to be in touch with TIPS with regard to the Matthew Street Bridge, and, TIPS being the county program for prioritization of highway projects, with regard to the Matthew Street Bridge, and the, uh, input that was provided by the business and property owners of Greenwich Avenue, and, um, also that I had asked the mayor to be in touch with the DOT to let them know that the village was affected by an unholy removal of funds for the study of widening 17, and just hope that the, the board will take action on that. Thank you. Thank you.
An afterthought, if I may, my consultants was also for Trustee Stewart's mom, I'm really awfully sorry to hear about that.
Thank you.
Uh, also, yeah, I actually attended that library board meeting, and God bless them, because I just don't have the stamina of those meetings. But, uh, one of the things I wanted to say at the meeting, and I never got around to saying, but maybe they could watch it on this video, was that the thought occurred to me that, uh, County Executive Diana and the County Legislature are debating and considering whether or not to consolidate county government across the street here, and by doing so, putting back onto the market, or abandoning however you want to put it, the, uh, the other buildings within the village, the county government center over by the Civil War Monument, the old county government center, the, uh, the old courthouse, although I don't know that that would work as well, Veterans Affairs Administration Building, uh, the Board of Elections Building, but the thought occurs to me that there's, there may be some vacant properties coming up that may work as a library, and, which may afford the opportunity to keep costs down, especially if the county acknowledges the relationship that the village and, and this community and the county have had since before I was born, you know, and accommodating the village, or pardon me, the county here, and the village, maybe the county and, uh, this community, Ramapho Library System could come to some sort of an accommodation, if any one of those buildings, um, might suit their needs, I just don't, I just don't.
That sounds intelligent.
What's that?
That sounds intelligent.
Uh, consideration, right, I thought.
Sure, it's got to be empty space.
Might be a wild goose chase, but maybe not.
I'm thinking any of the tax laws are already offered, putting another non-taxing entity in there, that's not a bad idea. The only problem is, though, some of those, with the, as we've been told in the past with the library, because of the weight.
Sure.
Support, that might be the cheapest avenue.
Well, that's why the, the thought also occurred to me, Veterans Affairs and Board of Elections, and that's.
Crosswalk, yeah, yeah.
That's really only kind of a stone's throw from the present library, and maintain the present property and have a satellite.
And they have the parking right across the street?
They have a parking right across the street.
That's an excellent idea.
Anyway, food for thought, I know that's not, not near.
No, but that's good.
Maybe they'll hear it, yeah.
I hope so.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day, you all look great, by the way.